Good evening, everyone. I would like to call this meeting back to order. And so is there a motion to come out of the executive session? We have a motion to come out of the executive session by Mr. Usherwood and a second by Mrs. Hoyes. All in favor? Motion passes. Is there a motion to approve personnel A. 1 through 11, B. 1 through 2, and C. 1 through 13? There's a motion to approve personnel by Ms. Hoyes, second by Mr. Usherwood. All in favor? Motion passes. Well, welcome, everyone, to our regular call board meeting for Tuesday. We have some guests with us today that are going to help us with the pledge of allegiance. So at this time, I'm going to ask the Boy Scout troop of 415, I think it's at a River Watch Middle School, is that correct? So gentlemen, come up, introduce yourselves, and then we will stand and do the pledge. There you go.
My name is Alhans. I just wanted to call to make sure that I'm here. We'd like to fulfill the pledge. America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Very good job. At this time, we're also just going to do a moment of silence for reflection. All right, before we get to the recognition session, I do want to recognize a special guest. We have Mr. Usherwood's mother, Mrs. Usherwood, in the stands out here somewhere. If you could, please raise your hand. Thank you so much for coming, and we're so grateful that your son is part of our board. All right, we will go to the next agenda item, which is recognitions with Mr. Derek Hershey.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Derek Hershey. I'm glad to know Mr. Usherwood invited his mom to the board meeting after Mother's Day. That was very kind of you. It was great. Well, we're so excited for all of you to be here this evening. We've got quite the crew. So let's go ahead and get started. We're going to start off by recognizing the 2025 GYSTC Don Cargill STEM Scholar Award. And here to present the award is Jenna Hinkle, STEM Program Manager. Would you like to come up?
Good evening. My name is Jenna Hinkle, and I am the STEM Program Manager for the Georgia Youth Science and Technology Centers, often GYSTC for short, headquartered at Kennesaw State University. GYSTC is a not-for-profit educational foundation founded in 1989 to increase interest and enthusiasm for science, technology, engineering, and mathematics in elementary and middle school teachers, students, and parents typically in underserved and rural areas. One of our co-founders, Mr. Don Cargill, envisioned a different kind of STEM student, one who would be conditioned to imagine, innovate, and create new jobs and industries in Georgia. The Don Cargill STEM Scholar Award recognizes teachers who are working hard to integrate effective STEM education into their classrooms. These teachers demonstrate a passion and determination to provide students with innovative and challenging STEM experiences and create an atmosphere of exploration that excites, energizes, and equips their students to pursue enhanced educational opportunities in STEM. On February 3rd, Mr. Colby Counter, an esteemed educator at Matt Elementary School, was one of 25 teachers honored at the Georgia State Capitol as a Don Cargill STEM Scholar by the Georgia Youth Science and Technology Centers. Mr. Counter received this prestigious recognition for outstanding integration of STEM instruction with a rocketry lesson which had a positive impact on students in all grade levels and abilities that he served. As part of this recognition, the Georgia Senate presented Senate Resolution 50 commending the awardees on their integrated and innovative teaching of STEM. In addition to the recognition, Mr. Counter was awarded $500 to support his classroom project, STEM Speedsters, where students will learn about Newton's Laws of Motion and other standards by building a Lego car and testing it on a modified Pinewood Derby track. Thank you, Mr. Counter, for all you do to impact Georgia's greatest resource, our students.
The person that inspired me to do the Rocket and Track is also here tonight, Mr. Hopkins. And I just, he was here for something else, and I thought that was pretty ironic. I just want to thank him for inspiring me.
Congratulations. And if you are family or friends, coworkers from Matt Elementary here to support Mr. Counter, please stand at this time so we can recognize you as well. At this time, we are going to recognize the GSHSA Girls Wrestling State Champion, three-time state champion, with 97 wins and zero career losses in three years, Artemis Eaton. Coach Gerard is the coach. Come on forward, Coach Gerard, to be recognized as well. 97 and O. That sounds pretty good. Great job. You guys want to go ahead and get a picture? All right, and if you are family or part of the Raider Nation that came to support Artemis, please stand so that we can recognize you. Also from North Forsyth High School, Class 6A State Swimming Championship in two events, both 50 and 100 freestyle, Owen Cooper Jr. Come on forward, and Coach Lennox Geiger. I know Mom wants a picture. Mom's got to get her picture in there. All right, family, friends, and staff members to here to support Owen, please stand so that we can recognize you. Well, here's a trend here from North Forsyth High School, Class 5A and 6A Gymnastics State Champions. And both head coach Radicki and Crittenden, please come down as well. I think they know what they're doing, Dr. Dugan. I have this feeling that all the Moms are over this direction. I just have a hunch. All right, so family, friends, it looks like you guys are standing. Anybody else here to support our Lady Raider gymnastics team? Let's give them a big round. All right, and at this time, I believe that Ms. Dr. Brittany Cantrell is going to come and talk about some science and engineering award winners. And she's got energy, everybody, so be ready. Here we go.
Don't worry, I got a coffee hidden over there. All right. Hi, thank you so much, guys. We have lots of fun things to celebrate tonight. We do have a handful of kids who are for various reasons, most of them that started with Dr. Seattle to stay for AP exams. So we got a few people we're going to recognize who aren't going to be here this evening. But it's my pleasure to begin tonight by recognizing this exceptional group of students. We've got some high schoolers and some middle schoolers who are doing all kinds of amazing things in the world of science. They're creative, deeply committed to solving real-world problems, and it's truly a pleasure to watch them do their work. So we're going to begin with Daniel Lee, who isn't able to join us in person tonight, but he stood out on the national stage and was named a 2025 Inspiration Award recipient at the National STEM Festival in Washington, DC. His innovative project focused on reducing food waste and creating cost-effective irrigation technology to support low-income farmers. And out of projects from across the country, only seven received this distinction. So National STEM Festival, co-hosted by the U.S. Department of Education, celebrated students with solution-driven answers to global challenges. Next, we get to move to the world of the Georgia Science and Engineering Fair. So you're going to see representatives from our junior and senior division right over here. And so when we're looking at our science and engineering fair, this means that they have to make it through school and district-level competitions to move on to a regional competition and then be invited to go on to state. So these folks have made it through the wringer at this point in lots of levels. And so in April, they were able to go and represent Forsyth County schools. We're going to start with the senior division. At the high school level, these folks can earn an invitation to an international science and engineering fair. And so it is very prestigious. You can win the entire science fair and still not get an invitation to ISIF. So it is absolutely my pleasure to introduce this first young lady who was going to join us virtually, but unfortunately found out at the very last minute that she has a mandatory meeting. She is actually at the International Science and Engineering Fair right now. So Pragati Kasana Akula is recognized for her work in nanoarchitectures, for the identification of exosomes, and TNBC. It's stuff dealing with breast cancer. I definitely had to ask her. But she got a GSEF Top 10 Award. She also got the Pinnacle Award, which means that she won first place out of the entire senior division of the science fair in the state. She got Best in Category for Physical Sciences, specifically in chemistry, and she is an ISIF finalist. So we should all send her all the good wishes as she is out there competing at the, yep, on the international stage for Forsyth County, which is really exciting. So additional senior division GSEF winners include R. Kathari Dia Raj and Pollock Verma. They did a project on multimodal frameworks for non-invasive celiac disease diagnosis. They also got a GSEF Top 10 Award and Best in Category for Medicine and Health, specifically translational medical sciences. We have, yeah, they are, yes, incredibly impressive young people who are going to do great things to change our world. Murnal Kukarni is with us for novel graphene ink sensors for monitoring sleepwalking patients. And so he also received a special award from the Georgia Intellectual Property Alliance Young Inventors at GSEF. And then we have Sean Lee, who assured me that he is studying for two AP exams right now, with a project on CasD9, so evolution of genetic and synthetic biology. But he earned a Society for In vitro Biology Student Award at GSEF. So very impressive young people. And then we're going to move on to our middle school category, which you high schoolers are very impressive, but these middle schoolers, wow, the science that they are doing is pretty incredible. Yep. Oh, one high school first? Got it. Does that mean I'm coming? Okay, gotcha. Guys, I'm just here following instructions. In our junior division, so here's something really exciting. Regeneron Society for Science does an international science fair, but it's high school only. So in recognizing that it's, you know, maybe not the best idea to curb the STEM pipeline at the middle school level, for the first time in 2023, they created a national science fair for middle school students. 300 teams from across the nation are invited to compete. Each state gets a quota. Georgia was given 17 this year. We have four teams that will be representing Forsyth County. So I could not be prouder there. It's really incredible. So Arjun Ananda, with his project on Cytognosis, was a Thermo Fisher Junior Innovators Challenge nominee. So he will represent us at a national science fair, which is as high as you can go in the junior division. And he also got a Best in Category for Biomedical Engineering. Yes. So we have Avery Lowman, Kelly Lu, and Kavya George Raju. They worked in a project under FIRE and also received a Thermo Fisher Junior Innovators Challenge nominee. So they will also be representing us on the national stage. Salone Guy, Anushka Venkatas, and Maya Davis. Their project on ImmunoTel AI Domain Matchmaking, which they would have to explain to us at a different time. They got a Best in Category in Systems Software. Olivia Molesworth, No Longer Lost in the Middle: How LLMs Handle Long Cortex Context Work. So Best in Category for Robotics and Intelligent Machines. All right. Shambavi Sankar, Sanvi Meramanda, and Anushka Nair for biodegradable versus polythene. They are also Thermo Fisher Junior Innovator Challenge nominees, so going to the state, or, sorry, the national level for us. And finally, last but not least, Sunika Karanar and Saranya Bandaru and Saruni Pulajala for their project on Segrebin: Revolutionizing Waste Management, also going to be joining us at the national level, and a Best in Category for Environmental Engineering. Just want to say a quick thank you to the board for letting us recognize these incredible young scientists who represent us so well, and the teacher mentors who supported them. Are there any science folks here that we missed? Okay. Thank you.
And if you are a parent, staff member, anybody here to support these amazing students, please stand so that we can recognize you. Great job. I'm not going to lie, I was sitting over here listening and trying to figure out what it was that Dr. Cantrell was saying, and a lot of you, I kept seeing the same look. Hmm. Yeah, we did really good. You did a great job. Congratulations, students. Excellent. At this time, we are going to switch over to West Forsyth High School's esports team. Come on up, gentlemen, and coach. The esports team won their very first ever state championship in the Rocket League, and I get an air high five because I know I missed you. Sorry about that. Gabriel Beck, team captain, Kylov Brady Burke, and Coach Carl Lyles. Coach Lyles was talking to me earlier about coaching esports, and he was talking about the X's and O's of esports, and I didn't quite understand that, but I think he's got it figured out down there. Great job. And if you are here from West Forsyth High School, friends, family, here to support these amazing gentlemen and coaches, please stand and give them a big recognition. All right, now we get to introduce the Employee of the Month for May from our Transportation Department, who's sponsored by Jim &amp; Nick's Barbecue, Northside Hospital, Community Cup, Coming Family, Carrot Pactor, Freedom Mill, State Farm, MDSI, and Peach Skin Sheets. And we are excited to honor and recognize Marsha Turner. Marsha, come on forward. Marsha, you get to stand next to me while I read some amazing comments about you. Can you do so?
Yes.
All right. So Marsha was nominated by a lot of people, and this is what they said about Ms. Turner. She is simply amazing, always positive, professional, and supportive in all she does. She's a great team leader. It's my pleasure to work with hers and all the others in District 30. Marsha leads by listening, responding, and getting things done, and done right on time. She is the right-hand man for our district supervisor. Marsha can do it all. Marsha leads with intentionality and consistently reinforces adherence to sore principles with her drivers. She always has a smile on her face, even now. Whether coaching or correcting subordinate performance, the most commonly heard words out of her mouth are, "You are awesome." I want to end on that right there. "You are awesome." And you get a nice little goody bag. All right, do we have any family, friends, or the Transportation Department here to support Marsha? Okay, at this time, we are ready for the superior spotlight, and I am pleased to announce from Liberty Middle School, Principal Dawn Hudson. Welcome. We can give her a hand, can't we?
All right. Well, good evening, members of the board, district leadership, and community guests. My name is Dawn Hudson, principal at Liberty Middle School, and it is my honor to begin our presentation by reflecting on a powerful piece of our school's identity, one rooted in resilience, remembrance, and unity, and one that we are also extremely proud of and honored to share with you tonight. Liberty Middle School opened its doors in 2002 in the wake of one of the most defining moments in our nation's history, September 11th, 2001. Our name, the Liberty Patriots, was chosen with intention and pride, symbolizing the strength of the American spirit and our commitment to honoring those lost and the heroes who rose in the face of tragedy. From the very beginning, Liberty has made it a priority to ensure that we never forget. Each year, we host a heartfelt 9/11 Remembrance Ceremony welcoming district office personnel, first responders, families, and community members to join us in reflection. The ceremonies have featured keynote speakers who have experienced the events firsthand or who were deeply connected to them. But perhaps the most powerful moment came when one of our very own teachers, a member of Liberty's first sixth-grade class, stood before our students and staff to share how growing up at Liberty, shaped by the legacy of 9/11, inspired her journey. Tonight, she is with us again, along with others, both students and teachers, who have helped shape this wonderful legacy and carry this tradition forward. Liberty's story is more than just a timeline. It is a testament of how our schools can be places of healing, honor, and purpose. Thank you for giving us this opportunity to share the legacy with you tonight. And now I turn it over to teachers Mr. and Mrs. Kumho.
One of the reasons the 9/11 Remembrance Ceremony is so important is that our students weren't alive at that time, and some of our younger staff members were very young at the time. And so they weren't following it on the TV news like so many of us were in seeing the events unfold. And so for them to see the images and to hear the timeline is really impactful for them, and it's important for them to know the history of the day so that they know the heroism of the first responders, so they know about the lives lost and about the survivors and about the unity of America as they came together at that time. It's a really important message for them to know and the history of our country at that time. And we have a different theme each year. One year it was remembering and honoring our first responders. One year, our theme was never forget. And this past year, our theme was unity, which was a really important message for our students.
And way back when we were brainstorming the whole program, Evelyn and I thought, how do you connect with 1,000-plus students in a gymnasium? And obviously, visuals and music were important. And so a student-produced slideshow that we projected on the walls or big screens along with some rock music, music that can engage the crowd, was kind of produced. And then it morphed into how do we even further engage the students by not bringing students to actually do the music, become a rock band, and perform for their own peers with the slideshow going. And so it kept on morphing into more and more, and a few teachers joined the rock band, and it now is a program that totally connects and shows how we are all connected to this event in some way, shape, or form.
So now, along with the slideshow and the student rock bands, the Fine Arts Department all works together to make it the program every year. So the chorus, Ms. Kenny's chorus students sing a couple of numbers, and Mr. Collins always has a trumpet player play taps. And the drama students participate in a variety of ways depending on the theme of the year. One year, they did creative movement. They have narrated the slideshow timeline of events in past years. This past year, when unity was our theme, I had drama students sitting amongst the student body, and then one at a time, they would stand up and speak actual firsthand, like, words from people from New York who were there at the time, and that had a real impact on the student body as they heard those words. The visual arts has become just a beautiful part of the ceremony in the past years. Ms. Kennel has got a piece of art. Would you want to go ahead and show it now? Natalie Basila is a student, and she was not able to be here tonight, but her artwork is, this gorgeous piece of art was created by one of Liberty's students. Is it called Unity in Crisis? Is that right?
Yes.
Unity in Crisis was created by one of our students. But also, students create invitations and programs for the day. So all of our Fine Arts Departments pull together to make this just a gorgeous and really important event. One of our drama students is here tonight. Connor Hopkins is an eighth-grade drama student, and so we've asked him to come and say a few words about how this, the 9/11 ceremony is important to him. So let me introduce Connor to you.
Hello, I'm Connor Hopkins, and I'm an eighth grader here at Liberty. And this year, I partook in the 9/11 ceremony and just deeply impacted my life because it taught me this was just sad and heartfelt day. And for me, one of the most important reasons why we do this is because, like Ms. Kumho said, none of the eighth graders, sixth, or seventh graders were alive during the attack. said, none of the eighth graders, sixth, or seventh graders were alive during the attacks. So it shows us how it's nothing to joke about. It's a serious and heartfelt day that we need to be serious about. For me, it's kind of silly, but for me, I liked the moment of silence because the whole school went silent and just gave everyone a chance to think that this is a real day, where people died, and it's nothing to joke about. My parents just moved into apartment right after the attacks, and they said the whole country came together and united, which, how America works. And their neighbors were Muslim, and they said they didn't leave their house because they were just nervous of what people were going to say to them, just bring them down. But that's not how America works. We don't bring people down because of their race, or their gender, or beliefs. And that's why I think Liberty, I think it's a good idea why we have our 9/11 ceremony
This is an image of our student rock band, just for you to see an example. Thank you, Connor.
September 11th, 2001, is a day that each and every adult in this room can recall as if it happened yesterday. I'm sure we can each tell you exactly where we were, what we were doing, what we were thinking, and what we were feeling. I was a fifth grader at Cole Milton Elementary in Ms. Nix's ELA class. She received a phone call, began to cry, and turned on the TV that was in the top corner of the classroom. As a class, we sat and watched as the news stations replayed the recordings of the devastating events over and over again. A community came together and poured three gifts into Liberty Middle that make it so special. Those gifts are faith, hope, and love. The first administration and teachers that filled Liberty had faith in the difference they were making. They had hope in the futures of the patriots that they were teaching. And as a former Liberty student, I can personally attest and tell you that love has always been the most abundant gift to fill the halls of Liberty Middle School. A community came together and wanted to remember the patriots that were lost on September 11th, 2001. Liberty Middle was not supposed to be named Liberty Middle. The mascot was not supposed to be the Patriots. Liberty was built during a time of solidarity and unity amongst every American in our nation. Liberty's name, colors, and mascots are just the beginning of our tradition to never forget. There are symbols of remembrance everywhere around you as you walk the grounds of Liberty Middle School. Our oak tree that stands out in the front of the school has always had a ribbon on it. It was planted when the school first opened. It symbolizes the strength of a nation that stood united during a time of tragedy and grief. The four stars on our gym floor represent the four planes with innocent lives that never made it to their intended destination on 9/11. The locker number 9/11 that is located down the eighth-grade hall has never been issued to a student. Instead, it is a time capsule of remembrance containing multiple items from throughout Liberty's years of legacy. There are also letters from each student that attended Liberty the first year that it opened. I was one of those students. I remember writing my letter in Ms. Mitchell's sixth-grade homeroom class and getting to watch as they closed the 9/11 capsule and thinking how amazing it would be to get to be there when that time capsule's opened 25 years later. Every patriot that attends Liberty Middle School has now become a part of the legacy to never forget. Each student places a flag out front to represent a life that was lost on September 11th, 2001 during our flag ceremony. Each flag represents a mother, father, sister, brother, grandmother, grandfather, aunt, uncle, and cousin that never made it back home. They represent the firefighters and paramedics and police officers who ran into the unknown to try and save as many souls as they could. They represent the individuals who sacrificed their lives to save coworkers, friends, and people they didn't even know. Each flag represents a patriot. We are all patriots. I cannot tell you where we will be in the next 23 years, but here is what I can tell you. I have faith that Liberty Middle School will still be here protecting and educating our future patriots. I have hope that the patriots we continue to have walk our halls will go out and make a difference in our community and our world. And that love, I can promise you, will always continue to be the most abundant gift to fill the halls of Liberty Middle. I was, I am, and I always will be proud to be a Liberty Patriot.
Thank you for letting us share our story tonight for the Superior Spotlight.
Thank you for sharing. Any statements or questions from the board? I think it's just a great honor that you guys are continuing to do this every year. So thank you for that. I think the beginning of our meetings, we just love the recognitions. It's our favorite part. The next part, not so much. It's boring. So we're going to allow a recess, so if anybody wants to get up to leave, you can leave at this time.
And I just want to recognize Mr. Connor Ollie on his last board meeting with us.
Why you tell us that?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Will you shut that door? All right. We're going to continue with our agenda. The next item on our agenda is the public participation on agenda items. I do believe we have no one signed up, correct?
Correct.
All right. So next, we will go to the consent agenda. We've all had the opportunity to review the consent agenda. Are there any questions on the consent agenda?
Yes. I actually had one question. When we have contracts for services, how long are those contracts? And like, what is, are...
Yes, please.
Yeah, sorry.
Mr. Matt Work.
Sometimes it could be Mr. Work, sometimes it could be Mr. Hamill.
Yeah. I was just looking...
Can you turn on the light, please?
Just looking at the consent agenda, items that are contract services, like, for example, pest control, how, like, how often do we get new bids for those type of things? Do we open it up to the public? Does the department seek out bids for that infrequently?
Good question. Yeah. All of our contract services are year-to-year contracts. We don't sign multi-year contracts. However, we do award up to a five-year renewal. So we review them every year, but we have the right to renew the contract for another year. At the end of five years, so we can only do that five times, at the end of five years, the state requires us to put out an RFP for the entire scope of services. Now, a lot of times contractors come back, they have to go through the RFP process. And we like that because if we don't like a contractor, if they're not serving us well, we're not in a multi-year contract. So they are reviewed yearly, but we do have up to a five-year renewal. Does that answer your question? And then we're required to put it back out. Good?
Yeah, thanks.
Perfect. All right. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Make a motion to approve consent agenda.
There's a motion by Ms. Hoyes.
Second.
Second by Mr. Grimes. All in favor? Motion passes. All right. The second, or the other item on our agenda is going to be our presentation and discussion items. First with Mr. Larry Hamill is going to be our 26 budget timeline.
Good evening. Tonight, we're going to talk about the fiscal year 26 budget process and timeline. So right now, we have the budget presentation draft ready to go for May 27th at a 6:00 p.m. meeting. We're going to have our first budget hearing on the 29th, and those ads are going out in the paper this weekend, actually, for that date. And then we'll have our second budget hearing for June 12th. The June 12th and the June 19th, Village 1, 2, and 3 meetings are basically on the calendar, but we are still waiting for information from the chief appraisers' office, and we're kind of at their mercy that if they don't get it to us in time, we may have to cancel the June 12th and then change that date to a different date. But we're waiting to see what we get from them. Right now, the problem is they're still waiting for the software to be updated, and they give them a June 1st deadline. So if they get it done June 1st and something to us in time, we can get that published in the paper seven days before June 12th. If not, then we'll have to figure something out.
Yeah. And the challenge with that, that we ran into last year, is by law, you have to have it advertised seven days in advance, but you also then have to have it submitted to the paper in time for them to get the ad space for us. And sometimes the information comes to us before we can get an ad in, in time to meet the seven-day requirement. So we're going to just have to commit to being flexible when it comes to the village hearings because we're really at the, you know, as Larry said, we're at the...
Mercy.
Mercy of the county tax assessor, yeah. And obviously, with this year, there's been some new exemptions put in with our House Bill 717. The county has 581 to contend with, so they've got some software and spreadsheets and things to figure out before they can get us a hard number.
Correct. That June 1st deadline is the deadline that they've given us, that the software company has talked to, the county chief appraiser's office. And then on June 19th, with everything going correctly, after the last milage rating, we will have a call meeting to approve both the budget, the final budget as presented, and then the milage rate that goes with the budget. Any questions?
So this is our best-case scenario timeline. Reality is, this could tick up towards the end of June or even early July.
Worst-case scenario.
Yep.
Any questions? Thank you, sir. The next item on our list is going to be the distracted learning with Dr. Amy Bartlett.
And while Amy comes up here, I just want to remind folks that are watching and remind the board that, you know, Amy, Amy's done a phenomenal job as the point person with this, the chief communicator on this. But this has been, as you see, an incredible team effort, both from our cabinet, but also when it came to spearheading the four, the four leaders you see before tonight. So when the arrows come in, don't just aim for Amy. Aim for all four of these folks.
No, aim for me.
Thank you, Dr. Young. So tonight, we are pleased to present the proposed distraction-free education policy here in Forsyth County Schools. And this has really been the result of extensive research, of thorough collaboration, as you've seen over the past several months, and really meaningful engagement across our district. So several months ago, at, you know, the beginning, I would say, of the second quarter, maybe, we looked into what this could look like in Forsyth County Schools. We worked with the people here tonight, so Mike Evans, our chief technology and information officer, Todd Shirley, our chief of student support, and really spearheaded by Dr. Amy Bartlett, our associate superintendent of teaching and learning, to dig into what this policy could look like. And so we've worked with our students, our staff, our teachers, our stakeholders, to ensure that this policy not only reflects the current realities for our students, but also aligns with our strategic goal areas, really engaging our students for academic success, but also protecting their social and emotional health. And so we'll give an overview of that process along with the proposed policy here for your review tonight.
Okay, wonderful. Well, as Dr. Dugan shared, this initiative really relates to two key areas of our strategic plan. And I know our entire board, along with many of our community, were at our town hall where we talked about the pressing need being really grounded in these two areas. First of all, the learner experience. We recognize that devices right now, electronic devices, are causing distractions in our learning environment as our students at all levels are preoccupied with their devices. So we really do believe that this policy will help address this issue and really enhance the learner experience for all students in Forsyth County. The second area in terms of the pressing need relates to social and emotional health and well-being. And really, this one is a driver in our work. We know that limiting electronic devices has been proven to truly reduce stress, anxiety, and distractions while enhancing our students' focus, engagement, and overall well-being. So these are the points of the pressing need, and we really went in depth with that in our town hall to talk about the research and everything behind the drivers for this policy. Additionally, we've made very concerted efforts to elicit stakeholder feedback throughout the course of this year from all of our stakeholders. This year began with Dr. Young attending local school council meetings at all 43 of our schools, meeting with our community, our parents, our teachers, and our administrators. Also subsequently, we've had advisory meetings throughout the year, teacher advisory, student advisory, and parent and community advisory. And this topic has been at the forefront of conversations with all of these stakeholder groups to elicit their feedback and input into this policy. Mr. Young also held focus groups with students during the second semester, meeting with students at the 5th grade, 8th grade, and 11th grade level, targeting all 43 of our schools. And additionally, we put out a stakeholder survey to all of our parents in the county, specifically asking for their thoughts, their ideas, and their opinions, so we could use that and compile that as we were charged with developing this policy. Most recently, we held our Disconnect to Reconnect Town Hall, which was very well-attended. And out of all of these pieces of stakeholder feedback, we really, you know, came to the point of having a lot of great input. You can see here, our survey generated over 3,800 responses. We heard a resounding support for the restriction and limiting of cell phone usage during the academic school day. That was prevalent from all stakeholder groups. When we look overall at the surveys and the feedback that came in, there were some questions and some comments addressing how parents may be able to still have contact with their students during the school day. And we came back to our school board after our town hall and heard from you, we want to really go with a balanced approach and take in all of this feedback as we generate a policy for consideration for our school district. So as we move forward this evening to our recommendation, we also want to point out that our policy was written, is aligned, it goes above and beyond House Bill 340, but it certainly is aligned to those core requirements, which you can see outlined here. This was most recently passed in our Georgia legislative session this year, which will enact a Distraction-Free Education Act, requiring all local school systems to enact policies and procedures for electronic devices kindergarten through 8th grade. So for us at Forsyth County, we wanted to talk about this piece, but also expanding and what that would look like through our 12th grade, through all of our high schools as well. But know that these guidelines and guidance that we've received from our legislation was also taken into consideration as we formulated our own policy for our school system. So with that, we're going to present to you this evening our proposed distraction-free education policy for Forsyth County schools. I want to reiterate, the purpose here is to create environments free from the distraction of cell phones and personal electronic devices. We're committed to ensuring our students are provided with every opportunity to focus on their learning and engage in positive interactions to support their well-being. I want to note here that while House Bill 340 has been passed in this recent session, GSBA has not yet put forth a policy code. Typically, there's a policy code that will associate with legislation. That code has not come out quite yet because of the recency of the legislation being passed. So as we present this policy tonight, we've been in touch with them for their recommendation, and we're recommended to address this with our policy JCDAF, which is our appropriate use policy. And that's what we're recommending, that this policy goes into right now, because GSBA hasn't initiated another policy for us to use at this time. So we're recommending that this policy here, committed to distraction-free education, goes into place. You see here, the recommendation, the guidelines are different for elementary and middle schools and then our high schools. So we are recommending in our policy that at elementary and middle school, all cell phones and personal electronic devices would be turned off and stored away during the duration of the bell-to-bell school day. So at the elementary and middle school level, off and away, not out at all during the entire academic day for the bell-to-bell period. You'll note in item 2 that these restrictions do not apply to the buses, bus stops, or before-and-after-school events, but bell-to-bell at the elementary and middle school level, that they would need to be off and put away out of sight. In section B, you'll notice a little bit of a differential for high school, and we did take a lot of our feedback into consideration as well as, you know, the progressive nature of high schoolers getting ready to then their next step be college. And know there is a space and time for cell phone usage. So the recommendation here is that cell phones and personal electronic devices are turned off and stored away during the bell-to-bell school day. However, students may access their phones and personal devices during their lunch-assigned period only. And I will say here that we did benchmark with some neighboring systems who have put this specific policy in place just at the high school level to say that at the lunchtime, we heard loud and clearly from some of our students too, with different events happening throughout the day and having one point at least during the day to check those messages and have that communication and teach them how to responsibly use that, but still preserve the fact that during our academic time, that those are not impeding anything with instructions. So that is the differential in our proposed policy for high school. Again, the restrictions here do not apply to the buses, bus stop, or before-and-after-school periods. The additional elements for the proposed policy with expectations are that our students would comply with the directives to avoid disrupting the environment, or they may be subject to disciplinary actions in compliance with our code of conduct. Also, when the devices are allowed, we want to ensure our students are respecting privacy of others. And we were very specific here that any photos or videos without prior approval is strictly prohibited on our school property, which is inclusive of school buses or in school-related activities. And notably here in section C, we want to ensure that our employees of Forsyth County schools will be modeling the responsible use of cell phones and personal electronic devices. That's something we feel very strongly about. If we're expecting our students to do that, we need to be modeling that from the level of our employees as well. In section 4, you'll notice that we have a reference for students with disabilities or in need of other accommodations. So there is a provision there. If there are students with plans that explicitly mandate the use of a device for medical or educational purposes that are noted in a plan, that we would honor that with their respective plan if it was outlined there. And finally, section 5 with notifications. We want to ensure that our parents, guardians, and students know that there are policies and procedures associated with how this policy is going to work. And that would take many forms that will work with Dr. Dugan's department with communication, staff handbooks, student handbooks, our website, very clear communication about what the policies are. Notably, this is what the policy recommendation is, but pending approval, this policy would sit for 30 days where our public will continue to have an opportunity to provide feedback. So there'll be an open opportunity for any feedback to come in from our community for the next 30 days related to this proposed policy. If and when that is moved forward, we would then subsequently need to develop additional things to have procedures and resources, including updating our board regulation where more specific guidance would be given to the policy, our staff handbook, our code of conduct, and our family engagement guide and student handbook. All of those corresponding pieces would have to be aligned with that new board policy. So this is what we'd like to put forth to you for your consideration this evening, for this policy to sit for the next 30 days while we gather and gain more of our community feedback. So I welcome your comments, your questions.
Yeah, absolutely.
Just to chime in here real quick, you know, obviously pending approval, this policy goes through. But I don't want to, I don't want to just kind of quickly go by the regulation piece and the code of conduct piece. I think several years ago, we dealt with a, with a rising crisis of vaping. And we, at the beginning, were kind of stabbing in the dark from school to school, and it was a little inconsistent from school to school. And that's when, when at the district level, Mr. Shirley and his department stepped in, worked with our principals and assistant principals, and developed an approach to that that has been very consistent across the board. I've instructed Mr. Shirley and our team to treat this very much the same that we did with vaping. We give a lot of autonomy, and there's a lot of it, 43 schools, you know, how you treat different situations. This is not one of those. This is one of those that this is new. We're talking about changing a way culture has been done here for a long time. And inconsistency will not help us achieve the goals set forth with this. So I want to make that really clear. We're going to be meeting with principals tomorrow and telling them that should this pass as written, that this is a non-negotiable. And particularly the part that you talked about with the teachers, I will just say publicly, you know, that teachers are going to be the key to this happening. And if teachers are not in compliance with this, then there's going to be ramifications for that as well. And I'm not saying that in a threatening manner to any teachers. It is a hard, hard job that they've got from day to day. And we're not trying to turn them into cellphone police. But within the four walls of a classroom, teachers have a lot of control of what goes on in those four walls. And we need them to be on board, and we need them modeling. And quite frankly, you can't monitor student behavior in a cafeteria or a playground or in a classroom if you, as a teacher, are scrolling through your phone. And that is going to be something that we're going to address as well to make sure that that is maintained consistently. Cherokee County, I don't want to call them out, but that's one of the neighboring counties, they actually rolled this out ahead of us. And the first month of school, they saw a lot of kids in the cafeteria accessing phones because the kids felt like they might be missing something from their normal classroom text and posting. All my contacts there say that after about the third or fourth week of school, the usage during lunch period went dramatically down, and kids were talking to each other and hanging out. And again, I don't want to say too much about their data and speak on their behalf, but at this point, they've seen a drop in discipline related to cell phones and bullying, and that sort of thing go down significantly. All right, I'm talking in not just low numbers, but 20, 30% is what they shared. So I know there will be, if we go with this, there will be a time period where there's adjustment for our teachers and our students. But I think what the staff has presented you tonight captures the spirit of what we're going through, maybe not as hard, and is in line with the exact research as we would like to see. But I think the reality of having to enforce what our principals and APs and teachers are going to have to enforce meets, you know, a middle-of-the-road that where enforcement can take place, but I'll stop there.
So this policy is going to sit out there for 30 days, correct?
Correct.
And the community has an opportunity to provide feedback. How do they do that?
That is a great question. So if I may, Ms. Mayo, does, oh, Dr. Dugan?
Yeah, so we'll have an opportunity. The way policy sits right now is people who want to comment on policy can go to Assembly, they can comment on the policy. It's also shared on our website as a news item, so there's easier access. Regarding what Dr. Bartlett mentioned earlier, tying it to a policy, it might look a little bit different because that code doesn't exist yet. But people will still be able to give feedback via our website and Assembly.
Okay. Is there going to be communication out to the community?
Would this be a situation where a messenger would go out that would have the policy in it and then a link to the feedback area? Is that something that could be put together?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I just want to say thank you so much for all of your hard work. I know you all spent a lot of time digging into research and putting this together. It's something I'm really passionate about. And just, you know, on the expectation slide, C, of course, is something, thank you for highlighting that, Dr. Young. That's really important, that the employees are modeling behavior. But also to the community, parents have to model the same behavior of responsible use. Because otherwise, we can't succeed as a community as we go down this path of responsible device use. It has to be all of us working together, so.
I'll just say thank you also for all of the research and work. I know that it's been a work in the making. It's no secret that I've leaned more towards a full ban. But in talking to a lot of people, I am understanding the difficult manner of having something like that and enforcing it and making sure we are not biting off more than we can chew as a district, that we're able to, you know, give some strict guardrails, which we don't have in place right now. So I'm really excited to see that we're at least rolling this out and we're moving forward and we're going to be ahead of the game. And I appreciate you talking about the autonomy piece. I think that at the end of the day, whether we did a full ban or this restriction, the enforcement piece is the most critical component in making this successful. So bringing in some of that autonomy on the consequences and giving them the administrators' guidelines, I think is going to be really critical.
And I'll just say thank you. I agree that I think having consistency across the schools is going to be extremely important so that our schools stay on the same page. And, you know, we don't have a change from, you know, one part of the county to another. So I think the consistency, I think is going to be probably the biggest key to this. So I appreciate you all addressing that as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Evans, don't go far. You're next with Chromebook update.
And as Mike comes up, I'm going to chime in again, because I spoke again to colleagues that have put their policy in place or some variation of it. And one of the things that they said would have been extremely helpful when you take phones away in a world where a lot of research is being done in classrooms on devices. And when you look at our background over the last almost 20 years, we've been touted as a BYOT school system. If you vote that policy or a variation of it in place in June, we're basically announcing the end of the BYOT experiment, which has been a 20-year-long experiment. It was never intended for a phone, but that's what it went to. We've had inconsistencies in enforcement through the years because we're telling kids BYOT, but then we're also telling them you can't have a phone out in class, and it's been a very mixed message. So the colleagues of mine that I've talked to are like, if they had just had been able to have a device that the school provided and replace the phone that the kid brought, would have made them really take off. And without further ado, I'm going to segue that into Mr. Evans.
Thank you for that. That was a great transition. So really, what Dr. Young has asked me to do is provide you an update on where we stand. At your first board retreat in January, when the departments met with you, I talked about the possibility of a one-to-one integration within the classroom. And so really, when we're looking at this, and we've discussed several different variations of it, the direct alignment to our strategic plan, a learner profile, I won't read through this, you're very familiar with it as well, aligns to everything that we do as a district, the different initiatives and the strategies that we hold true. So the scope of what we're looking at doing with the Chromebooks is to look at a middle school and high school level where we are at truly a one-to-one aspect. So that would mean a Chromebook would be assigned to a student, that Chromebook would go with the student to school, to home as well. The intent is really to look at, making sure that the activities, whole-class activities, are not impacted as we're going forward. A lot of the feedback that we did hear from students in how they use their cell phones, they use it for research purposes, they use it through the classroom, for a variety of instructional purposes. So this would also give them a device to utilize during the school day. Not only for whole-class activities where teachers are doing that, but also for independent work for students. And the other piece that I want to touch on, and I'll go into it a little bit further on, is really the ability to have a filtered and protected device for home use. We've done a lot of research, talking with students in the super advisory, superintendent's advisory group, and they even acknowledge it. advisory group, and they even acknowledge that. In most cases, students have no filtering, no content filtering on their phones and their devices at home. We've seen that when we've done some monitoring and testing of different monitoring tools at home, for home use on district devices, that it's the wild west out there, and it's an unfortunate situation. It's something I think we can do better as a district to help inform parents of the dangers and challenges with that. So really, what we're looking at doing, again, I had mentioned that one-to-one at the middle and high school level, we originally had a conversation around elementary school as well. And this model does not put it at, at one-to-one down at the elementary school level. I know there were concerns with some screen time, and I want to differentiate the difference between screen time on mobile devices and Chromebooks. So for what we're going to be talking about right now is at the middle and high school level. Again, the feedback that we heard from teachers, there's an ongoing need for more Chromebooks. The challenges that they face in the online demands, we have several new core instructional resources that have moved to online. New ELA standards for the state now have multimodal components to it where they actually have to read, listen, and respond as well. Common assessments, we're now initiating common assessments throughout the middle school for this upcoming school year. High school will be following as well. Again, these are online common assessments. And another benefit to this is even at the state level with the milestones, having the Chromebooks allocated the way they would be, we could possibly even reduce the number of days that we're doing state testing because of the devices that they would be available. Another challenging part is classroom management. With the offset of the BYOT program, when that was in place, students could bring their own laptops, they could bring their own devices or cell phones for classroom activities. The teachers had no view into what those students were doing in the classroom. We have an application called ClassWise where teachers can actually pull up student devices if they're district-owned devices. They can push out websites, they can lock down websites so they can only access X, Y, or Z. But they can't do that with a BYOT program. So in this case, with the students actually having a Chromebook, district-provided Chromebook, the teacher would actually have that full control and that full aspect to, to be able to assist with the classroom management component. And again, finally, the internet access that I touched on before. With this, the content filtering that we have, LineWise is the company, ClassWise is the actual classroom product. The devices would have filtering on them for home use as well. Well, they also have another benefit to that is that families would have access to an application called Custodia where they can actually apply parental guidance controls on a personal device as well. So if they have a cell phone, and again, this is where the communication piece will come into play, they can actually initiate controls onto that cell phone as well to help really try to give the students the best accessing, guided access and control that they can have. Again, something that we're seeing that's a challenge along the way. So from a, from a history perspective, back in the 90s when we started with technology, we had four desktops in every classroom. As that evolved and the need for online access changed, around 2007, we actually switched it. So we pulled them out, we put four or 10 Chromebooks in every classroom. There's a wall cabinet that you've seen in there. And then we also said, well, there are going to be times when teachers are going to need to do whole class activities. So we brought in additional carts that a teacher could reserve and bring into their classroom. That were great for a while until there was a constant need. We don't have enough devices to do the activities that we want to do, engaging the students. So we brought in more Chromebook carts. Even up to this last year, when we surveyed the schools, we're still constantly hearing they're not available for checkout, they're getting reserved by other, other grade levels, other subject areas. So we brought in more carts this year at the middle school and high school level with the intent of adding elementary potentially the following year. So this is where we currently are. So if you look at it down in the bottom left corner, we have 50, roughly 54,500 students. We have 63,000 Chromebooks in the district, okay? Now that's made up of 39, about 3,900, and these are rough numbers, that are school-provided, PTO and school purchase. The district has provided about 53,000, and then we also have the federal ECF Chromebooks. During the pandemic, we were awarded Chromebooks to send home to students for home use, so we have about 6,100 there. So when you're looking at it and we're hearing this need that there's still not enough devices, but yet we're more than a one-to-one within the school district, it doesn't make sense to keep purchasing more devices to try to meet that need. So really it's a matter of reallocating them and repurposing how they're distributed in the schools because what we're seeing is during a school day, you have teachers that are on planning periods, you have Chromebooks that aren't getting used in classrooms. So that's why they're not available for other teachers. Now, they've served, served us well at a certain time, but as we're going forward, that's where the challenges that we're dealing with. So looking at the numbers, in order to do the one-to-one at the middle and high, the elementary would be staying the same. We roughly have just almost the same number of Chromebooks as students are already at the elementary. So we're looking at roughly middle and high students, around 31,000 students, and we have about 33,400 Chromebooks right now at the middle and high school level. So what we're looking at doing is for, in order to be one-to-one, you need to have 3100, I'm sorry, around 31,000 Chromebooks. And what we're also looking at doing is providing each school with about 8% extra. Students are going to show up without a device, they're going to be broken. So on most cases, they would go to the library, they would check out a device, have it assigned to them for that day. So that's where the extra that's there. So if you're looking at the total numbers, again, we're about 400 short. Well, we're not going to need, need to be sending home all those ECF Chromebooks at the middle and high because they're already, will have a device. So looking at those numbers, basically pulling from that, the extra that we have there, and then potentially even, even offering some of the additional Chromebooks down to the elementary school for additional carts, not one in every classroom like we had talked originally, but to help offset some of the needs that they've, that they've been requesting as well. So the implementation plan on the right-hand side, really tomorrow, we're going to be having a conversation with the principals. We've already had conversation with them previously and our ed tech coaches, but really having that conversation with the schools to finalize what that looks like, work with our communications department for a communication plan for our families. This summertime, actually collecting and redistributing the Chromebooks at the middle and high school level. We have a variety of different Chromebooks out there and models. So what we'd like to actually do is pull all the newer Acer models and put them all at the middle school so that when we are looking at doing a refresh, we can refresh in chunks of grades. So we'll do all the middle school, all the high school, and all the elementary down, down the road. And then also building that at extra capacity. So a couple of key notes. Number one, the first and foremost, that's the most important one, is reinforce the best instructional practice. We've had conversations with our teaching and learning department. Dr. Bartlett has been fantastic. We all recognize, even though with the stipulation of it being a one-to-one program, it does not mean that your student or your child is going to be on a Chromebook 24/7 throughout the school day. So reinforcing with the teachers, what does that really mean? It means that it's a fantastic tool. We want kids creating, we want kids collaborating with it, but it should be used in small chunks, opening lessons, activities, assessments along the way. But it does not mean that a student is on a Chromebook for the entire class period. There may be times if they're writing essays or whatnot, but that's not the intent behind it, and we'll make sure that we're reinforcing that with the teachers. Again, I'd already mentioned, middle school will be on the same model, the middle schools because that is the one. Talking with all the other districts, about 24 other districts we've spoken with that have already been one-to-one, middle school is the most prone for breakage and damage. So we're actually putting cases on those devices. We are going to offer an insurance for families. And talking with other districts that have done that, the money collected from that really even offsets any type of damages that go along the way. And, you know, from some of the folks that I've spoken with, they already told me they're going to be the first in line to make sure that they're purchasing that insurance just in case. Chromebook costs about $300. And again, there's really no significant cost that, as I had shared with you, the number of devices that we have, we already have the number for a one-to-one implementation down the road because what we would be doing is absorbing the cost of the Chromebooks that the schools and the PTs have purchased into this model. So we would absorb those and look at replacing those down the road when we do our next SPOS because our Chromebooks are actually part of our SPOS purchase, funding as well. But again, looking at absorbing that number, that would be about $1.2 million, but that would be offset by some of the other costs that we're looking at doing in the classroom. Really, we recognize that there's challenges. Everyone we spoke with, the first month, month and a half, it's going to be painful. Everyone says you're going to make it through it, kids are going to start forgetting them, and then it's going to be up to the schools, the administrators are just constantly reminding them and reinforcing them as well as they're going through that part. And again, the benefits, the academic continuity in the classrooms, increasing student engagement, making sure that those devices are available for them, financial efficiency because it doesn't make sense to keep purchasing more Chromebooks to meet the needs of the, of the teachers that they're seeing. And again, really drilling into the student protections that, that we're trying to help reinforce at home too.
With that. Any questions from the board? No? Well, our next item is financial report, so thank you so much for saving us.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
All right. Next up, financial report with Mr. Larry.
Tonight, we're going to talk about the April 2025 financial report, excuse me, statements. As always, we keep, by the way, we upgraded, updated these, the boredom item here. We hit it wrong previously, so that's our fault. We should have changed it when it got changed about a year ago. So you've been getting the old one, not the new one. With the cash disbursements and receipts for April 30th, we started the month off with about 258 million, we ended the month about 235. The receipts and disbursements are normal for this time of the year. This time last year, we had about $226 million when we closed April. For revenue, we're at 89.92%. This time last year, we're at 91.66. We're about 1.7% behind. The biggest culprit right now seems to be the title of alarm tax. You can see that we budgeted about 27.7. We collected about 19 or about eight behind. It looks like we're going to be about $3.5 to $4 million down on that. A lot of that has to do with cars not selling as well. And historically, we've been seeing big increases year after year, but this seems to be a very low year. We're not sure how much of the election or tariffs have played into it, but that's kind of what we're seeing right now. Everything else seems to be on par where it needs to be. With the expense side.
I just want to confirm, on the TAVT, that is, the sole driver of that is vehicle registrations, correct?
Correct. That's all that is. On the expense side, we're at 83.13%. This time last year, we're 82.56. We're about 0.57% ahead of schedule on expenditures, but we're still normal for this time of year. We're probably going to end up spending between 99, 100% of our expenditures. So it looks like we, with that being said, it's a possibility we might have a slight deficit when we close the year out cash flow-wise. On debt service analysis, as you can see for debt service, regular account and debt service, LGIP, we have about $768,000 in there. This time last year, we had about 16.6. As you know, we lowered the milage rate about two years ago to 1.418, excuse me, three years ago, and we reserved some money on the general fund to help pay for that. We are going to keep the milage rate at the 1.418 for this year, and based on the collections and what we have reserved out, that should be more than enough to pay for upcoming year. SPOS 6, we're down to about $11 million. This time last year, we're about 46. On special revenue funds, we're exactly where we need to be with those. This is a combination of all the special revenue funds to include Title I, Title II, and sped. On cash for capital projects and school, school food services, with capital projects, we got about $26.5 million in the bank. This time last year, we had about 15. And right now, we're at 20.5. This time last year, we're about 21. As you can see, school nutrition is slowly going down, but they did have a good month in terms of revenue. We did have spring break off, so that played into the expenditures versus the revenue. With the investment summary, currently we have 160, almost 160.1, 1.2 million in the general fund. This time last year, we had about 149. Debt service, we just looked at that, 185 versus 4 million. SPOS, school nutrition is at 16 million versus 15 last year, and of course, SPOS 6 is about 11 million versus about 45. In total, we have about $170 million in our investment account versus about 222 million last year. So we had a really good month for April based on March collections. It came in at $5.4 million. So you can see it was about 661,000 higher than last month, about almost 14%, and we're 8% ahead of last year. We've had a, a good stretch the last three or four months in terms of collections. Currently, if you were to project out the remaining months on what's left to collect, with six months towards the end of collections with a $300 million cap, we're looking at $301 million almost exactly. So if these amounts are a little bit below par or not as far ahead as we thought they would be, we should limp into that next quarter being able to collect, which means we'll only be three months in advance of collection instead of six. I think we'll have a better idea by June or July what that looks like going forward.
And Larry, in, in terms of the SPOS, just to, just to go ahead and get this conversation out there in the public airways, the, the money from, from this SPOS, regardless of where we're in collections, whether we're three months or six months, either way, we're going to, we're going to have to look at extending the current SPOS into a SPOS 7, and, and that would take place kicking off, I think, in 2027, which means we would have to get it on the ballot this November for that to take place. Is that correct?
Correct. We would either end collections, I believe it's November of '26 or February '27, depending on how far we get into the, the six months versus three months category.
But my reason for bringing that up is, is over the course of, of the next couple meetings and, and conversations that Larry and Matt and our principals are having, we'd like to, we'd like to, at some point here in the near future, share with the board the preliminary SPOS language that we would like to have put on a, on a ballot so that we can get that to the Board of Elections in time. And my understanding is that we would need to have that completed no later than July so the Board of Elections can have it by their deadline in August, and that gives us enough time to get it on the ballot in November.
Correct.
So I just, just want to say that publicly, that, that we'll just, we'll just need to continue that conversation as we, as we go forward, but that, that's something we would really like to try to get scheduled, that, just the language for the ballot between now and, and maybe mid-June. And I've asked Larry to go ahead and Michelle to work on that.
The elementary schools ended the month with about $4.9 million. They had about the exact same month last year. Receipts and disbursements are normal for this time of the year. Middle schools, they have about 2 million versus 2.2, and high schools are about 7 versus 6.8. And again, receipts and disbursements are normal for this time of the year. Overall, there's about $14 million in the school accounts. The breakdown you can see is very similar to last year with the high school being 49% and the elementary being 16. And that's the financials for April 2025. Any questions?
Any questions from the board? No questions, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. The next item on the agenda is our action items, and it's going to be policy EEA, free and reduced nutrition programs with Mr. Todd McClellan.
This is four board meetings in a row that I've got up to the table in front of you. I'm looking forward to the one where I.
You're almost like Jer.
So I, I have it on, from a good source, that his streak might be coming to an end. I'm not going to.
Stick to the policy, Todd.
Can't do the same, yeah.
Stick to the top policy.
Good advice, Mr. McColl, okay. Welcome, board members, and Dr. Young now. So from what I understand, the comments have been out there, the public has added 30 days make comments on this policy. No comments were made, so at this time, I would request that Dr. Young make a recommendation to the board.
I recommend to the board to approve the changes put forth by Mr. McClellan.
Is there a motion to approve the changes for policy EEA? Mr. Asherwood makes a motion to approve the policy. Mrs. Hoy seconded it. All in favor? Motion passes. Perfect, thank you.
Thank you very much.
The next item is our financial audit. What's on?
Yeah, Mr. Ham, can you just click on that? So at our last meeting, we, we presented the audit findings that came up from the, from, I guess it was FY '24, in that we had a, a finding that resulted in us being put on the state's moderate risk list. Travis has promised when we get off that list, we're going to have a good, big headline that says clean audit. He's promised that. All right, but at that last meeting, we had to, we had to provide publicly our corrective action plan for that. We presented that. You've had that to look at for a month. I just wanted to ask if there was any questions on that and then we would ask for your approval of that plan that we could submit to the state.
All right. Is there a motion to accept this audit report?
Make a motion to accept the audit report.
Mr. Grimes made a motion. Mr. Asherwood seconds. All in favor? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Next on the list is the points of information. Anybody? Anybody have any points of information? All right, we're going to go right into public participation. So we do have a public participation guideline, and to help with this guideline, we have this awesome device right here in front of you that is going to help with the timer. So you have three minutes to speak. When there's 30 seconds left in your turn, the light will turn yellow. When there's 10 seconds left, the light will start flashing, and then when your time is up, the red buzzer will go off. So first up, anybody guess? Jer Cursell. Welcome, sir.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. This time, I actually have handouts, so.
Can you just give Ms. Suzy?
To start, I'd like to thank the board and district for all their hard work. It feels like we've weathered the culture wars and things are on the right track again. I know there's still room to improve, but at least we're moving in the right direction, boys are boys, girls are girls, and content of character is how we are judging people again. So tonight, I'll address something perhaps less controversial than my usual. I tuned into the working session meeting, and a bullet point on one of the slides regarding AI stood out for me. Students should not use AI tools to create or propagate harmful, misleading, offensive, or inappropriate content. Now, for people who agree on what is harmful, or misleading, or offensive, or inappropriate, this would be an easy policy to follow. But if anything has been made clear over the past decade, trying to find agreement on these terms in this day and age can be incredibly difficult. And of course, some of these arguments are important to have. One person might find the Song of Solomon inappropriate as the pinnacle of smutty biblical poetry, while another person might find books that encourage gender dysphoria as not only inappropriate, but also harmful, misleading, and offensive. A better policy statement would reduce the reliance on subjective terms and hopefully avoid the ideological battles that may rage from time to time. As an experiment, in honor of the topic, I prompted a few AI engines to rewrite that policy bullet to be less ambiguous. All of them showed at least a slight left-wing bias in some of their award choices, but I think Grok was the closest to neutral. As with all AI output, I had to make some final edits for accuracy and clarity, but here's what I'd like to propose to replace that bullet point under IFBG-R Section 1. Students should not create or share content that violates local, state, or federal laws, including content that incites violence, discrimination, or harassment based on protected characteristics, race, sex, religion, or national origin, contains false or fabricated information presented as factual with the intent to deceive or mislead others, includes explicit or graphic material that violates the school's code of conduct or community standards, infringes on the privacy or intellectual property rights of others, such as sharing personal information without consent or using copyrighted materials without permission or attribution. I'm not sure what the actual process would be to have a parent propose this kind of policy amendment, but I would greatly appreciate it if one of the board members could help me through the process or submit it on my behalf. I'd also like to volunteer to help with any other AI curriculum or guidelines that school district might like to develop, especially around critically assessing AI tool output and recognizing AI hallucinations. In my company, I'm neck-deep in a number of attempts to leverage AI, and I have extensive experience training our techs to understand the real-world limits of these large language models. And so on that note, thank you very much for your time, and again, I would love to buy lunch for anyone who disagrees with me.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Nikhil Fernandez, is that right? Welcome.
Hi, my name is Nikhil Fernandez, and I'm a student at Lambert High School. Thank you for providing me with the opportunity to speak in front of you all today and represent the students of Forsyth County Schools. Today, I hope to speak for the 7,000-plus special-needs students spread across schools in our county. Currently, I serve as the president of Project Shine, an organization that re-provides free science-based workshops for students with special needs and provide them with exposure to STEM topics. We also ship free science experiments kits to students across the state. Through this organization, we've seen the true impact that interactive science experiments can have on those with special needs. These simple science experiments, such as creating a mini shaving cream volcano or creating a rainstorm in a bottle, not only gave these students a good laugh and put a smile on their faces, but also exposed them to possible careers for their future. Since 2014, there's been a 37.8% increase in special-needs students in Forsyth County Schools, making quality education for these students more important than ever. I believe that by implementing interactive science workshops into special needs curriculum, we are able to foster a sense of fun and enjoyment with these topics and encourage these students to positively impact the world of STEM. These students are just as able to change the world as any other student, and we believe that they deserve the opportunity to explore their curiosities. By introducing STEM in an interactive and enjoyable way, we believe that these students will be more welcomed to go outside their comfort zones and try something new. Science can be a very intimidating space, especially in schools where a majority of students are taking high-rigor or AP-level science courses, which can cause these students to believe that they're unable to contribute to this field, but that is farthest from the truth. Instead of introducing courses like chemistry, biology, or physics as intimidating, rigorous, and only meant for those who already excel in the classroom, we want to open these courses as those that encourage curiosity, experimentation, and perseverance. Through courses, these courses encourage students to be curious by allowing them to experiment, ask questions, and discover new ideas through hands-on learning. Therefore, it is imperative that we portray these classes correctly and provide these students with fun, hands-on experiments that they will enjoy. Thank you for your time, and I hope that we will be able to incorporate hands-on science workshops for special-needs students across our county. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Real quick, who's with you, your guests?
They're just some of my team members that are partially part of the organization.
Gentlemen, you dress up very nice. Thank you. Can you have somebody connect with them?
Yeah, I'm looking back, Sarah Taylor's all over it. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Taylor would connect with you after the meeting. Thank you. All right, that concludes our public participation meeting for this evening. Is there a motion to adjourn? Motion by Ms. Hoy, second by Mr. Usherwood, all in favor? Motion passes, adjourn. Thank you for, everybody, have a good evening.
So since like, you're my dude.